Work session. It's a wonderful spring-like day out there today, and maybe that's a sign of good things to come. But if you want the real weather forecast, you need to come to White Deer Park this Sunday between one and three o'clock. This is when we get really scientific. We have the only weather predicting groundhog in North Carolina, Snird will be there to tell us what to expect. Now, I can't tell you what he's gonna say. He didn't know what he's gonna say. He won't know until that day. But I can tell you, in the last communications I've had with Snird, he said he's headed with his winter junk. He's ready for spring. So hopefully, he can deliver what we want to hear on Sunday. So come on out if you can. And we will actually start the meeting by calling the roll and coming to order. We'll call on our deputy town clerk to call our roll.
Mayor Dutton.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim.
Here.
Councilmember Behringer.
Here.
Councilmember Dellinger.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
Councilmember Singleton.
Here.
Thank you. This is a work session. There will be no decisions made tonight, no votes, except one parliamentary process we need to go through right up front. We have one council member who will need a temporary absence sometime during our meeting for some period. We want to go ahead and do the correct thing and approve that in advance. Mr. Dellinger has a request to be out of here for an undetermined period later. We need a motion and a second to see if we can give him an excused absence. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A move by Mr. Matthews, second by Mr. Singleton. If there's no discussion, I would ask that all in favor of granting an excused absence during the evening's meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay, thank you. That motion passes. Mr. Dellinger, when your other duty calls, feel free to take care of it. Join us again if you can. You can always watch the film later if you missed anything here. Okay? That being said, let's move to adoption of agenda. I believe all of our council members have had an opportunity to look at the agenda this evening. It's pretty straightforward. And I would ask if there's a motion and a second to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Move by Mr. Matthews, second by Ms. Behringer. All in favor of adopting the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay, motion passes unanimously. Moving right along, there's no presentations this evening, but you're gonna get presented a lot of great information on some very interesting topics. We have a lot to learn. And I'm very excited to start out with something we've been working on for over six months. This was a result of our last planning retreat, which was roughly this time last year. One of the items that popped up was talking about a very important topical item called affordable housing. And as soon as we started talking about it, there was some discussion about, well, what is affordable? What does it mean? What's not affordable? How much does Garner have? How much do we need? How do we determine what to do next? We came up with a task force. We've had some outstanding volunteers step up and staff members and really work hard over the last several months to make the first step, the first step in this. And without further ado, I'm gonna turn our presentation over to our town manager, Jody Miller, co-chair with our mayor pro Tim Elmo Vance on the Affordable Housing Task Force. And I see who's up at the podium over here. Ms. Miller, if we might start with you, please.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Good evening. I'm gonna actually turn things over to the chairperson, Mr. Vance, who's gonna make a few welcoming remarks, and then we'll dive right into the report. So, Mr. Vance?
Yes, thank you, Jody, for that. And I would just say that this has been a great challenge over the past six months to work with the strong task force in defining affordable housing, determining some deliverables, and just trying to wrap our minds around what is affordable housing as it relates to Garner. And we were established back in June of this year, and we were charged with to create a roadmap for expanding and maintaining affordable housing opportunities based on data analysis, current economic conditions, and community feedback. And to fulfill that vision within Garner, we will, we are trying to welcome and retain the growth, growing diverse population, seek to meet and support affordable housing needs of a diverse population, partner and with regional and not-for-profit organizations on affordable housing preservation initiatives and construction projects, and share housing affordability information with the Garner community. As you see, those are a lot of goals and visions that we have established here, and we work diligently toward that, toward those goals, and to provide some type of framework to work within. And I'd like to recognize the members of the task force. For the council members, we have Mr. Dellinger and myself, Town Manager Jody Miller, Assistant Town Manager, Mr. John Hodges, who's in the audience right now, Assistant Planning Director Erin Joseph, who's in the audience, Mr. Ralph Carson, who's part of the task force, who's planning a mission with us, Mr. Jeff Swain, who is the chairperson of the Echard Economic Development Corporation, resident Ms. Katie DeCardenas in the rear, good to see you here, and Reverend Jeffrey Robertson, pastor of Juniper Level Missionary Baptist Church, and Ms. Tina Johnson, a former Garner Senior Citizen Advisory Board member. Thank you all for the time that you provided to us as we went through and sometimes debated and discussed how we can best provide a service relative to affordable housing for the residents here in Garner. And with that, I'd like to ask Mr. Dellinger if he would have any remarks in reference to our task force and what transpired over the months to say some things.
Yeah, I just want to extend the gratitude to all the task force members who put in so much time inside and outside of the meetings. It was really, there was a lot of effort put in by everyone, and it really shows in the final product. So I really want to extend that gratitude to all those committee members, particularly our community volunteers who came in and did so much work. The end product that we have at this point is a testament to that work and also kind of consolidates a lot of stuff that happened in the region across the state. And hopefully, with sort of the shared vocabulary that we've created in this document, we can attract partners that are advancing this mission with us and dollars that can advance this mission with us as well. So just thank you to everyone who's a part of it and staff who put inordinate amount of time into this, and we did a lot of work. And some other communities takes years to do. We did it in a matter of months. So it's really, everyone did a great job. Very pleased.
Thank you, Mr. Dellinger. And now I'd like to turn it over to the staff for the review of the report. Back to you, Ms. Miller.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Vance. Again, Mayor, members of council, good evening. It's a great pleasure to be with you this evening, to share with you the recommendations from the Affordable Housing Task Force. It was a labor of love by all the members of the task force. And as shared a few minutes ago, we accomplished a lot in a short window of time. And I think that this document represents something that we can be very proud of to share with you as it continues to move forward the town's conversation and priority of affordable housing. So Mr. Hodges and I are gonna walk you through the report. Tonight's presentation is really for information, to introduce you to the report, to let you have a better understanding of our process, our ultimate deliverables and recommendations. And then after we finish presenting, there'll be an opportunity for any questions that council may have. So I'm gonna dive right in. As Mr. Vance mentioned, we really focused on creating a vision for affordable housing within the town of Garner. And what's being recommended by the task force includes the following language: "To create and preserve safe, attainable, affordable housing that supports community building and maintains the town's hometown character." Now, I'll tell you, that's only one sentence, but that is six months' worth of conversation and research and work to really create a vision statement that really expresses the task force's belief in affordable housing, but also captures the work and the conversations that council has been having over a number of years on the topic of affordable housing. And as mentioned before, to fulfill the vision, we had recommend the following items, and Mr. Vance had mentioned these things: welcoming and retaining a growing and diverse population, seeking to meet and support the affordable housing needs of that diverse population, looking to partner with regional groups and nonprofit groups as we look at opportunities for sustaining affordable housing and preserving affordable housing in town, and then sharing the housing affordability information with the community. And this is step one, as far as information sharing with you and the community of all the work that we've done. It's important, as we continue down our affordable housing path and our journey, that we share the information, we share the data, we share our priorities, we share our strategies as we continue to move forward. So, walking you through the report, we have information regarding the task force members, the charge that council provided to the task force members, that creating the roadmap that Mr. Vance mentioned, and then also the committee structure. What we found was when we organized ourselves in the task force, we realized that we had a lot to do in a short window of time. And the best way to do that was to break out into subcommittees to do work in between the full task force committee meetings. We met monthly for two, two and a half, sometimes three hours, just as a full committee. But there was a lot more work that happened at that subcommittee level in between the meetings in order to produce the report that you see this evening. So in addition to the subcommittee work and the task and charge that the council provided, we also used some of the framework of the priorities that council had provided to us. This information is on page four of the report. But part of our work was a lot of reading and learning about affordable housing issues, possible partners in the region, other communities that have had success in their affordable housing priorities. And so we invited several partners to come to our meetings to present to us, for us to learn, you know, best practices, and for us to ask them sometimes tough questions about how they approached affordable housing, how they sustained affordable housing in their community. So, we had presentations from our friends and partners in Wake County. We had a presentation from the town of Apex and their housing department. Rebuilding Together of the Triangle is also a partner of the town. We had them come in and share with us their work in rehabilitation and preservation, as well as Habitat for Humanity. So, in terms of getting the work completed, one of the first tasks that we did as a task force was come up with a framework for goals. We really had to be thoughtful and strategic about how we spent our time in order to make sure we were effectively using that time and coming up with the best recommendations for the council. And so, we created what we're calling our Affordable Housing Goals Framework. And it really divided our time together into sort of three areas. The first was immediate goals. These looked at things like establishing common definitions, really coming up with our priorities and determining our deliverables to council, and then also doing the work regarding peer research and understanding best practices. That was the first two months of our time together, August and September. Looking beyond the immediate goals to our short-term goals, this was October through December. One of the things we really focused on was developing proposed affordable housing goals and metrics for the town, having discussions to provide recommendations and feedback to the town council in just what is the town's role in affordable housing, both locally and regionally. Recommending policies to inform development, and this is something specifically the council had asked us to do in terms of how we share information with the development community about what our expectations and priorities are for affordable housing. And then evaluate funding strategies and partnerships. So that's what we accomplished between August and December. But we also recognized that just because we have a report of recommendations this evening doesn't mean that the work on affordable housing is done. Quite honestly, we're just beginning to do a lot of this work. So we realized that there's also some longer-term goals that we need to be mindful of and think about how we continue pursuing the priority of affordable housing in town. So looking at our long-term goals, and this is January 2025 and beyond, looking at refining and implementing the metrics that are being proposed, looking at how we maintain and preserve existing affordable housing within town, and then continuing the work of implementing funding strategies and partnerships. So a lot of the work that we completed and discussions that we had at the task force level, a lot of the recommendations that you'll see in this report are data-driven. So there's a lot of data and information that we've included in this report. And you'll see in pages six, seven, eight, nine, ten. We have quite a few pages of data specifically to housing affordability, information from our friends at Central Pines on data specific to the town of Garner. But really, this information was used to help set goals and priorities and the metrics for the deliverables, which we'll share with you in just a few minutes. This is what we see as sort of ongoing data collection and monitoring as we look at affordable housing issues, and we really define our goals and evaluate our goals based on our metrics. So, as we thought about really narrowing in on what we were able to successfully accomplish in terms of our recommendations as a task force to the council, there were sort of four primary areas where we spent most of our time. And I mentioned earlier in my presentation that we divided into subcommittee groups in order to get a lot of this work done. And our subcommittee groups were really focused into these four areas. So the first was agreeing, agree on and recommend terminologies and definitions. This was a really important piece of the work that we completed. And we also realized early on that we were using similar terms, but we weren't understanding what each other was saying. And that in order to have informed affordable housing conversations, everybody needs to use the same language and understands the terms that are being used. The second area was to provide clear guidance and expectations to the development community. This is something specifically that council asked us to do as developers are coming to the council and requesting rezonings or special use permits, giving them a clear understanding, expectations of what the town expects in terms of their participation and support of affordable housing. We also looked at identifying affordable housing best practices in local communities. We have one of the best databases slash spreadsheets of best practices information probably of anybody in North Carolina. It's been an amazing resource for us to be able to use to really understand who does this work well, but also lessons learned in other communities. And then the last area really focuses on recommended target for affordable housing in terms of developing recommended goals and metrics. So I'm gonna turn this over to Mr. Hodges, who's gonna walk you through each one of these deliverables. So, Mr. Hodges?
Good evening, Council Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Miller. As Ms. Miller said, we did have four sets of deliverables. We want to share with you a little bit about those tonight. The first one being the terms and definitions. And as Ms. Miller noted, this was very important for us to all take all the many ways that we all may define affordable housing and come to some consensus on how we would use that in the future. There's a number of definitions here that we want to thank our subcommittee for putting together. But we want to, and I think these are all useful as a glossary as we all move forward with this work. I do want to draw your attention to one of the things that the steering, the task force rather felt was very important, was defining that while there's lots of measures and definitions for affordable housing, for the rest of this report and the recommendations that we are making, we're focusing on programs and housing for people that are earning between fifty and eighty percent of the AMI. And so, there's many different levels of AMI that is used in defining housing, but we wanted to specifically call out that we're focusing on fifty to eighty percent of AMI for our recommendations. And you'll see several pages here of definitions. And there's also some citations for some of the resources that were referenced to provide those definitions. At the bottom of this page, we also wanted to provide a link to the web resources that you may remember we shared with you a few months ago. We compiled all of our housing resources together into several web pages so that we could direct folks to that to find information. We'll be updating that with the final work of the task force after tonight's presentation. Deliverable two was goals and metrics. So we had three primary areas that we wanted to establish goals and metrics. One of them is a minimum housing target. And there's, we discussed lots of ways that we might could approach this, but we found that one of the ways that we were proposing to define this target for this initial recommendation report was basing some goal on what Wake County is doing as their goal for affordable housing. And so, Wake County has a goal of five hundred units of affordable housing creation or preservation each year. Our population represents about three point three percent of that population. So if you just base it on a percentage, which is a fairly basic way to come up with a goal, that will be about sixteen and a half units of new housing we would help get developed or encourage developing or preserving in the community. We did have some thoughts from the steering committee about continuing to explore ways to define this target as we move forward. So I would acknowledge that there were some other discussions about this, and this is the one that we felt like, for now, for our first draft, was the best way to represent that goal. Preservation and rehabilitation was one that the task force felt strongly about. So we have a goal here to reduce the number of Garner residents on the waiting list for Rebuilding Together of the Triangle by a minimum of thirty percent annually. So as the council is aware, we do provide annual funding to Rebuilding Together. They leverage our funding and provide the resources to do home repairs for qualifying residents in our community. I think we currently have about sixteen people on the waitlist, and we're hoping to be able to satisfy about six of the sixteen needs in the current budget year working with them. We also had a target here to work with partners to monitor and preserve existing legally binding affordable housing in Garner. So we do have housing that does have some legal controls and constraints on it currently. And those things, from time to time, do come up and timeout. So you may recall, we had the apartment complex near Town Hall a few years ago that reached the end of its legally binding status, and that converted to a market rate housing. So one of the goals that the task force felt was important was to monitor those with our partners like Wake County and others, to have those on our radar so that as those are approaching the end of their initial legal binding status, we may work with partners to be able to continue to extend those housing units. Our third area was leveraging partnerships. One of our primary partnerships right now, in addition to Rebuilding Together, is Wake County. And so we felt like it was important And so we felt like it was important to acknowledge that there were additional ways that we could partner with Wake County, specifically with their Housing Affordability and Community Revitalization Department and some of the programs that they offer. We do work with them already on these programs, but we, we thought it was important to call out that we could expand our work with them. We also wanted to, to target engaging affordable housing developers in discussions for new neighborhoods being built in Garner. So partners like Habitat that already have plans in Garner, working with them to make sure that we are achieving the town's overall goals and the goals that they have for their projects. And then lastly, leveraging funding sources to support affordable housing initiatives while maintaining progress towards council's goal of a balanced residential commercial tax base. So we think it's, it's always important for us to bring these conversations back around to one of council's longstanding goals of the, the balance of the tax base being as equally spread amongst our residents and our commercial tax bases we can. And so we want to make sure that the efforts we do to, to approach affordable housing help keep that balance in mind. We then move over to deliverable three, our guidance to the development community. There were several things that the task force has recommended and that we talked, discussed with council about guiding, giving to guide our development community. One of those being that affordable housing is a top priority for the town of Garner. Also reiterating that affordable housing is defined by the town for housing development and preservation is targeting 50 to 80% of AMI. Also, partnerships with development community should be explored to accomplish Garner's affordable housing goals, and these partnerships could take on different forms, but we think it's important to let all of our development partners know that they should be explored. Developers should be able to explain how their project supports the affordable housing vision. So we've had some discussions with developers who say we build market rate products, but we build products in a way that they are more sustainable, they have lower cost of operation or usage, because we have energy measures in place that may help someone in your regular workforce be able to not only afford the housing, but be better able to afford the monthly utility bills, which goes into the overall measure of the affordable housing threshold. So we think it's important for developers to be able to explain that to council and staff when they come forward with proposals. All residential developers are strongly encouraged to participate in achieving Garner's affordable housing goals either by creating affordable housing units and/or providing a voluntary contribution to Garner's Affordable Housing Task Fund, Housing Fund. And so this is a fund that, that we've discussed with the tax, the, the task force as to whether or not this is something that could be set up, that could allow voluntary contributions, and that's something that we'll need guidance from the, the council on. Then we also wanted to focus our development community on long-term sustainable strategies for new affordable housing need to be identified and implemented by the developer. So it is, we think it's, it's good to have developers who are willing to, to commit some units of their projects for affordability, but how do we ensure that those are sustained past the initial term and the initial years of that housing existing? And we did want to note here with the development community that in 2024, developers did commit to 101 units of affordable housing as a part of market rate developments that were approved by the council. And our fourth development are best practices. And as Jody mentioned, the, the steering committee, the task force and the subcommittee rather, especially did a lot of research and work on things that were happening in other communities. And there's a lot more best practices that were identified than are represented here, but we tried to summarize these in a way that we could highlight some of the top ones. And I'm not going to read them all to you, but we think it's important to, to look at things like creating a dashboard of annual, and an annual report of our activities in progress, develop a plan and a structure for what this task force or advisory board is going to look like in the future. Are there going to be resources needed to support that, including goals that retain long-term residents as well as new people moving to the community and so forth? So there's a number of best practices there that sort of summarize all of the many best practices. And then lastly, on this page, there is a sample of the communities that were researched. There are more than this, but these are some of the ones that made an impact on our, our subcommittee who did research and then was shared with our task force. And we felt like it was important to acknowledge that we were basing some of our recommendations off of their work. So that is a summary of our develop, of our deliverables, and I'm going to invite Ms. Miller back up to finalize our presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Hodges. So, as you can see, a lot of work was done in a short window of time, and the, the task force was very thoughtful about framing our conversations and our work that really focused on what could be delivered within the window of time that we were asked to complete, but also what would be the most helpful and meaningful in order to move forward the council's and the town's conversations and efforts with affordable housing. But, I will share with you, we had a lot of lively and informed conversations about the, the topic of affordable housing. And so although a lot of the recommendations focused on the four deliverable areas which we described, there are also some other recommendations that the task force felt it was important to include in the report. So as the council continues to review the report, have discussions on the recommendations, these are some of the other things that the task force thought were important to include and make you aware of. So, the first one looks at a strategy for sustaining this work, specifically what is that going to look like in terms of resources and staffing? Developing a town of Garner preservation strategy. We talk about continuing to work with our partners, but we, we also know that we have a lot of older housing stock in our community. We put a priority on keeping people in their homes, keeping them safe, and so what could be that longer-term strategy for the preservation of our existing housing stock? Investigating affordability sustainability strategies, really speaking to the long-term approach to this. It's great to create new units today, but what about five years from now? How do we guarantee those units continue to stay affordable as well? So what are some opportunities for those sustainable strategies? Work with our finance department and legal department to further explore the recommendation on creating a fund where there can be voluntary contributions towards supporting the, the town's affordable housing goals. Looking at other continued opportunities to partner with land trusts and the business community as we think about long-term strategies for maintaining affordability and adding new affordable housing units to town. Using some of the tools that we have already in town, looking at GIS and code enforcement data to really help us identify priority areas in terms of our preservation strategy. Developing opportunities for more community engagement around affordable housing. The task force did a lot of work in a short amount of time, but we also know what a complex issue the affordable housing is, and there's an opportunity to have further conversations and engagement with our community to really set a long-term vision and strategy. Also looking at engaging the development community in our efforts as we continue to think about and work on this issue. This is something I've, I've heard from some in the development community about a real interest in wanting to partner with the town. As we continue to move forward with this, with this issue, as we continue to look at strategies and wanting to be a partner in those conversations and coming up with those solutions. And then the last one was to conduct housing inventory study to, to better define housing availability and accessibility. This is always really hard in most communities to get your, to get a real number around how many units that you already have that are considered affordable, and then how do you continue to maintain those? And so, part of, part of the recommendations coming from the, the task force was we've got a lot of good data and information now, but there's more that we could continue to collect and look specifically at, at that will help inform our recommendations and strategies moving forward. So with that being said, that sort of closes out what's included in the report. I'm going to turn it back over to Mr. Vance for a few final words.
Yes. I would like to say thank you to the task force for all the tremendous work that you all have did with me, meeting off-base at various times to discuss further about affordable housing. My hat's off to you. Thank you so much, and for the staff and the expertise in pulling together a lot of information in a very condensed fashion that's pretty clear and clearly states that the problem that we're trying to, trying to work here with, which is affordable housing. Thank you to the staff and to Councilman Dillinger for his time as well, and for the council for having confidence in us to do this work and bringing it back before us on this evening. We see that we still have a lot of work to do. This, as was stated earlier, this is only the tip of the iceberg, and to continue on, with further defining affordable housing, I think it's imperative for, for the town to understand that it's something that is really important to the community as a whole. And with that, I'll turn it back over to the council for questions and answers.
Fantastic. If I could sum up my reaction to all of this in one word, it's wow. A year ago, as we were having our retreat, and somebody mentioned affordable housing, I raised my hand and say, I'm the rookiest one in here, newest on this job, the, the least informed about this. Tell me what it is. And right away, we decided, we're not sure what affordable housing is, but the progress that this task force has done in the last six months is unbelievable. The information you've put together and the presentation in an understandable way far exceeds my expectation for this first step. This was a very important first step. It will be an ongoing process as long as we live and as long as our grandchildren live, I'm sure. This is not going to be solved in a week or two or three, but I cannot thank you enough, all of the staff and volunteers who pitched in on this for the great, great job, just unbelievable. With that being said, I, I will throw it open to some comments from our, and our questions or food for thought from our other council members. There's no action that we need to take this evening. It's not approve it, disapprove it, it's not to decide on the next step, it's to absorb this information in another important way, and then over the coming weeks, months, to figure out how to start implementing some of the great ideas and information. With that being said, I'll start down here to my left with Mr. Matthews. Comments, questions, thoughts, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And again, thank you to everyone involved on this project. It's, when I initially got it, and I was, I was going to meet with our chairman and I, and, because I had some questions. Now, unfortunately, my printer, my cartridge, that's a business 90 to be in because they don't last very long. So, but Mr. Vance printed me a copy, and we had a chance to have some conversation on it and all the raw data in it, which I had. And my, one of my first questions, I said, is this Garner-specific? And he shut and said, all the numbers are. And I said, that's one thing I was looking for, which creates other questions. And, and as Mr. Mayor, as you said, this is not going to be an overnight project, and it's a situation every community is dealing with in Wake County as well as North Carolina. And whatever we do is not going to be the answer for all, but we certainly got a, a good head start in here of those things that we need to deal with, and it's put my thought process to work in maybe with this data, what's some ideas I can come up with and shoot back? And I'm sure we'll have it over the coming months, we will discuss this further. But, great information, and as you said, it's a lot to digest here. And I appreciate all the efforts and the data you guys have put together. So, we'll, we'll see where it all goes. You see that one number, then you say, well, how many houses are we trying to upfit, which is a great program that Triangle's doing? Is that part of that number? Is this a part of that number? And if that be the case, we're 10 times above what we need to be. So these are things we'll talk about in the coming months, I'm sure. But, thank you very much for what you have put together here.
Fantastic. Thank you. Mr. Singleton, observations?
Yes. First, thank the committee for all the time and effort they put into it. Specifically, I've got some specific questions. Page six, the baseline housing data and information, has homes built prior to 1990? I've been beating that drum for 20 years, sitting on the town council, how the effect this had on schools, and also the effect on our residential tax base. It's glad to know what I was talking about for 20 years has proven and the numbers was correct. Questions about these statistics, Mr. Matthews touched about in Garner, are we talking about only in the corporate limits of Garner these numbers are? Are we talking about the Garner, and Garner has a zip code 27529? What are specifically the numbers? Are just in the corporate limits, or they have this zip code? That way we've got three zip codes, so.
So, so I'll share a little bit more loudly. So to the best of our ability to collect the information to be town-specific it is based on census data, but to your point, there might be a little bit of, of carryover there. One more thing I wanted to mention, and, and Mr. Matthews, I'm glad you brought it up as well, the affordable housing sheets that you see on pages eight and nine, you've seen this information before. We actually saw it a year ago at the retreat. This is information provided to us from Central Pines. We've asked them to update that information, and they're in process of doing that. So the final copy of the report that we post online and share with council will have that updated information. We hope to have that within the next week or so. So we'll even have some more current information and data to be studied and thinking about.
Thank you.
So, so some of, most of it's in the corporate limits, but some of it could be out, but that affects our, that affects when people say it's the real estate price in Garner. It's done by zip codes, I believe, not by corporate limits and what's in the county. So I just wanted to get that clear, because it is more than just inside the corporate limits. It just surrounds us also. A question, I mentioned this to Mr. Vance as we talked yesterday, the numbers you focused on with the AMI is 50 to 80%. Is that a number that, and I see why you have the statistics here of the income, income of cost burdened households? Is that a number that, I mean, the 80? I mean, is that, do we want to come down from that? I don't, I don't know. There was an article of Mr. Mercer Somatodale, it was in the News Observer last week, about updated numbers in regards to how it affects everyone, the cost of everyone living in the triangle. So, I, I just, I don't know if we're going to have any more discussion about that in the near future. I just, I just raised that question. Yes, sir.
There was a lot of, we had a lot of conversation about that in, we, there are two ways to sort of approach affordability sometimes. And so, on the one end, we were kind of looking at affordability from the standpoint of who can afford vocation-wise, you know, police officers, what fits in that range. That was one way we wanted to attack it. The other is kind of what you're referencing, which is that cost burden direction. And so there's, there are two different ways of, of looking at it, and there's not a prescriptive definition of how we should do it. But I think on the one end for AMI, because AMI Wake County is so high, sort of traditional measures of affordable housing aren't actually affordable. So we were trying to take different directions at being able to define it, and different programs use different measures too. So, you're right, we struggled with this a lot, but really we were trying to get that AMI sort of something that was reasonable for sort of the vocations we were trying to retain or create housing for. And the cost burden is, is kind of a whole other issue that can, needs to be included sometimes. It, it's not hard to nail down, but your observation is right. It's, it's sort of both. Okay. All right. Thank you. That was asked.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Behringer?
I'm just overwhelmed at the good work that's been done here and all the information that's here. I like Mr. Singleton, over the years, I've asked questions, and I've asked questions and never really got detailed information or the answer that I was asking for. And there are, there's answers, and there's direction in here. There's something that we can work with instead of coming away and feeling like, well, I know we need it, but how are we going to get there? This is, this is very good. One of the questions I have is that on page 16, it said that in 2024, developers committed to dedicating 101 units. Over what period of time would we expect to see those units? And the reason I'm asking is that on a previous page, it said that Wake County recommended 16 and a half units per year. So what period of time would that 101 units be spread?
Ms. Behringer, unfortunately, that's one of the things we won't be able to give you a great answer on tonight, I think, and I'm pleased to hear that some of your other questions you feel like were answered, but all of those developments may take on different lengths of time for them to build. My guess is that most of the things that were in, were, that were approved in 2024, we usually see a three to a five-year ramp-up time for them to start being built and hitting the market. So, it's not a very specific answer, but I think in a three to five-year window, you'll see some of those units coming online, and then some percentage of the affordable dedicated ones coming out of that. Is it, does that help?
That does, and that's exactly what I was thinking in looking at that number. If you don't know the backstory, the rest of the information, that sounds like a lot, but it's not going to be in one year. And that is, that's good to know. Back in December, when we met with Triangle Community Coalition, one of the attendees there was a Habitat representative, and she came to me afterwards and said, she'd all want to talk to you some more. And back when I was new on the council all those years ago, we were just beginning to build Habitat houses, something I've always supported, and, and the idea of the partnerships is we're just, we're doing a really good thing there by continuing or investing in those partnerships more. more. And I think it's also important for us to understand or get a grasp on, and maybe most people do, that our young adults coming out of school and going to work or having a family, they're in that same category. They're in that 50 to 80%, maybe even not that well. So we need to consider that and broaden our thinking about who we're talking about and who all we need to help.
Excellent. Those are excellent questions from all the folks that asked the question so far. You have a follow-up question?
Yes, sir. Just one question. In this, what we're just talking about here, just it'll help my thinking processes as we move forward. When we see whatever this magic number, if it's, I call it that, we need to be, does like Tryon point out there, all of that, we cut ribbon on earlier this year, Habitat, does that magic number come out of those or is that a whole different world out there? Or what is, these are some things I'm going to have to deal with to understand, you know? If we need X amount of houses, well, we just did this particular project here and it's 250 there, but we're required 19. Have we finished, you know, or, and I'm being facetious, but you know? How does these numbers subtract out of the big picture we've got going on? There's a lot of working things going on here and I could not have been on that committee because I don't have enough hair to pull out. But I know we're all genuine, wanting to do something good, but you know, it's, this is a whirlwind trying to figure all this out.
Well, and Mr. Matthews, I think your question gets to the comment I made earlier that the discussions with the committee around, should we be using a percentage, a population percentage of Wake County's goal? Is that really the right measure for Garner? So I think that's one of the things. We include it as a starting point, but as we do more work on this and more investigation and more of the inventory that Ms. Miller mentioned, that may, we may take a different approach to that because you could say, and I think correctly so, that 101 units were dedicated in market rate projects in 2024, plus we approved the Tryon Station project, which is 176. So if you add those together, it's way above that number, but I think we have some anomalies. We won't always have the opportunity or the funding to participate in a project like the 176 at one time. So I think one way to think about that is maybe considering that a little more of an anomaly and a very good thing that happened, but as an ongoing measure, we don't always know when those type things are going. So it may be that as we continue this discussion, we look at, do we have some targets within market rate developments and do we have some other type targets? We also had some discussions around, is every project the right place to expect there to be some affordable units? So is there some other way to approach a project that is, may not be the best place to do a blended project, some way that they could help offset some of our preservation things? So I think there's still more discussion to be had, but Mr. Vance and Mr. Dillinger both acknowledge, and I think I stated that what was stated about, discussed by the task force, okay, and they may want to add to that, but I think your question is spot on is how do we, how do we sync those things up and are we approaching the right goal?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's all I have.
Yeah, these are the fantastic questions that we now have the ability to ask these questions now that we have a starting point. This will be the kind of questions we ask over the coming weeks, the coming months, the coming years. We have a foundation for these. We won't get them all answered tonight. We've heard great questions from the first three council members that were not on the task force. Let's hear a little feedback from our two council members that were an integral part of this, Mr. Dillinger and Mr. Vance.
Yeah, first comment, you know, the 101 affordable units we approved, I think they don't fit our current, the definition of affordable we've adopted now, but what I think it demonstrates is that willingness of our development partners to cooperate and partner with us, as sort of a touchstone of their willingness to do that work. The other piece I would say is I think one of the things we also coalesced around on the committee was, in looking at best practices, was funding some type of staffing to continue this work. There were multiple instances of communities doing the work and planning, and then the plan that only sat on the shelf, or they did the plan and the council said, we don't want to do it. So the actual staffing ability to carry the work forward, we found important and we'll have to talk with staff on in the budget process. The other sort of also initial funding and putting a little bit of skin in the game to demonstrate to our partners and whether it be a county partner or a private partner or a nonprofit, that we set aside some funding here to do this work and be kind of that gesture. And then the other piece is really kind of deciding what the next step is for a committee to support that work and answer these questions, a group that can constantly sort of be looking at this stuff and helping staff with those questions and do that like work, like our task force did. I'm not inviting them. I would love to have all of them back. I won't do that right now, but having somebody that's going to have, be a resource, an ongoing resource and help also with the community engagement piece that we know we'll need to do going forward. So those are sort of general comments and I think we're at a great jumping off point right now, so.
I think you just put your finger on two things, next questions and stepping off point. Thank you very much.
Yes.
And Mr. Vance, again, thank you for your leadership in this very, very challenging and very, very important quest here. Any other summary remarks you'd like to make?
I'll just say that great questions. In my mind, it says that we have more work to do and, and I would say not to hesitate in moving forward. We have, we have momentum, we have direction, and I would say let's hit it while it's hot.
Fantastic. I would like, just as a small gesture of recognition, I would like the participants in the task force to just stand up a moment, including the two that just spoke over here, as well as our two council members. If you would stand up, our other volunteers who were part of the task force, if you would just stand up, you don't have to give a right, a title, you don't have to recite it, you don't have to do a presentation, but we would like for you to stand up just one minute as we say, thank you, thank you, thank you. In fact, we don't usually do this, but I think it's a big round of applause for all of you. Thank you very much. You may be seated, no speeches required. Thank you so much. But we have a long ways to go. We will be calling on you again for input and feedback. Thank all of you very much.
So and Mayor, also, I want to acknowledge Mari Hal. She's on our team in our town manager's office. She's the one who, we took all this wonderful information and recommendations and put together this report for us, something that's easy to understand, easy to read, graphically represents the issues and the data. And we did a lot of work to get to the point to hand it over to her, but she worked her magic and came up with a design that you see before you today. And so I wanted to make sure to acknowledge her publicly and thank her for all her work.
That's great. Was there anyone else who was not present tonight that was a member of this project?
Attorney.
Oh, not, oh, we take our attorneys for granted all the time. Thanks for doing your job. No, thanks for outstanding participation by our whole legal department, I think, on this and many others, our guests who came from other towns, other organizations, they were great contributors to this, just a bang up start. We promise this will not die on the vine. I don't know what the next steps are, but we'll be figuring out that. We'll be talking about this at our planning retreat at the end of February. This will get a lot more talk, a lot more act. Thank you for your patience. Thank you for your contribution. That being said, we'll, we'll move along to something almost as exciting and that's how to get more money at better rates. And we're talking about a two-thirds bond opportunity. And this time, I'm going to turn this over to our financial wizard, Mr. David Beck, our financial director, and he can introduce our special guest, give us a little overview. Again, this is for receipt of information more than anything. No decisions have to be made at exactly this time tonight. Mr. Beck, it's all yours.
Oh. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Good to be here tonight. I have with me Ted Cole from Davenport and Associates, who you're all familiar with. And I will turn things over to him in just a moment, but what we're here to talk about tonight is sort of a unique opportunity that the town has before it. Kind of give a little bit of a background on, on where, what is, what's gotten us to this point and the decisions we have to make and where we go from here. So if, if you'll recall, you know, just for the benefit of the public who may not be familiar, the town had a geo-bond referendum back in 2021. There were four questions as part of that referendum and all four questions were overwhelmingly approved by voters. That authorization from the voters allowed the town to issue up to $69 million in general obligation bonds that will fund a variety of projects, Jürgen Park, street and sidewalk improvements, the fire station number five and various other things as well. So again, the town has authorization to issue up to $69 million in debt. We have had one sale of bonds so far from that 2021 referendum a couple of years ago, sold just over $21 million in bonds. We are preparing now for the second sale, which will take place in the spring of this year. That will be just over $30 million. And then we have a third and final sale scheduled for two years from now in FY27 to sell the remaining capacity of that $69 million in bonds. State law is very specific on general obligation bonds and what you are allowed to use those on, the process that has to be followed. And one part of that process is voter approval. There is an exception carved out in that law that allows municipalities to potentially issue some additional debt beyond what was authorized by the geo-referendum initially. And that's what's called two-thirds bonds. So it's an opportunity to look at debt you've retired and potentially gain some additional capacity to issue general obligation bonds. This could be used to, you know, fill in gaps we have in funding for various projects. We know that since the 2021 referendum, you know, we've dealt with inflation and cost escalations and things are definitely costing more than probably our original project estimates. So any additional debt could be used to fill in gaps there. So this is a new concept for Garner to consider that we're bringing to you, but it's not new for communities to utilize around the state. So just a few examples of some of our neighbors that have done this in the past, Wake Forest, Morrisville, Apex, Fuquay Varina have all utilized two-thirds geo-bond capacity in recent years. So again, that's just a little primer to set the stage for Ted and he'll go through some things in more detail. And then at the end, we will seek some guidance on next steps from council.
Okay, great. Well, good evening. I'm Ted Cole with Davenport. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. As David said, voted geo-bonds, that's very clear. You've, you've gotten authorization for the 69 million. You've issued some in '23, planning to issue some more the spring and then the last piece of it likely in 2027. Over the years, as you have issued more geo-bonds, each year, you're paying down principal against those bonds. And that's really what's fundamental to these two-thirds bonds. As David said, they aren't required to go to voter referendum to be issued, but you do have to hold a public hearing and do other council authorizations to issue them. And so I'm going to look at the right-hand side. The way the math works on these two-thirds is we're sitting here in fiscal '25, right? Last year in fiscal '24, you paid off principal against several geo-bond issues, the 2014s, the 15s, 18s, 19, 20, and 23, right? You have lots of geo-bonds outstanding. And in fiscal '24, you paid off $2.9 million of other geo-bonds. You paid that amount in principal. And what the two-thirds statutes says is the next year, that was in fiscal '24, now we're in fiscal '25, you can consider issuing new bonds that is equal, that are equal to two-thirds of what you paid off the prior year. So prior year, you paid off 2.9 million, two-thirds of that would be 1.9 million. So you have the opportunity under that legislation in the current fiscal year to issue 1.935 million of two-thirds bonds at the same time that you're going to issue the voted bonds that you're already planning on. Not, obviously, it's not required and it would take an application to the local government commission, that's required, a public hearing and council action. So we're trying to get, you know, educate about the opportunity, maybe get some direction this evening. I'll talk a little bit about the calendar going forward and what some of our options are. But it's, it is, it's very specific in the statutes, how the two-thirds bonds operate. And so just think about it for a moment, right? Whether you do the two-thirds this spring or not, you're going to do the voted debt, presumably. And what that will mean is in the current fiscal year '25, you won't have a net reduction. You're going to be adding geo-bonds to your portfolio because you're issuing new debt. Yes, you're paying some off, but you're issuing, let's call it 30 million. So in fiscal '25, there won't be a reduction in your geo-bonds outstanding, which means in fiscal '26, you wouldn't be able to issue any two-thirds bonds because it looks at the prior year and did you pay down the debt or did you add to the debt? So it's kind of one of those things, if you're in a, in a every other year issuance cycle, you have the two-thirds available to you every other year. So this is not a one-time use it or lose it. I mean, if you choose not to move forward for it, with it, you won't, you won't take advantage of it and that's certainly fine. You'll have another opportunity to consider something similar in fiscal '27. Okay, so just, that's kind of how it works. But this particular amount, the $1,009.35, if you wanted to take advantage of it, it would have to be done in the current fiscal year, fiscal '25, and it makes sense to do it at the same time you're already going to the market for the voted debt. Any questions on that? Okay, go to the next slide. This is a recap of what David explained. This is the voted debt, right? So back in 2021, you voted $69 million of debt and you can see there was public safety, parks and recs, streets and sidewalks, stormwater. The top of each of those boxes tells you how much was approved by the voters. Some of them we issued against in 2023, some we're going to issue against in '25. You go down to the very bottom box, 69 million was approved. In 2023, you issued 21.6. Right now, we're planning to issue on the voted debt about 30.2 and it's going to leave you with a little over 17 million. And the plan currently is that you would issue that in 2027. So that's really a recap of what David just sort of talked to, talked to for you. In talking about this two-thirds option with staff, we've come up with maybe what we would consider three likely options. You could decide not to take any action on the two-thirds, only move forward with the voted debt, which has been planned for, for some time, and, and just do the voted debt. That two-thirds opportunity would lapse, but you would get to another crack at a two-thirds bond issue in '27. So you could consider it again then. The second option would be to move forward with the two-thirds, again, I'm going to round off 1.9 million, and do that in addition to the 30 million that the plan anticipates. So issuing, let's round up 32 million this spring between the two-thirds and the voted. And then the third option would be take advantage of the two-thirds at $1,009, move forward with the voted debt, but reduce the voted debt amount by that like amount, $1,009, so that you only issue 30 million. And it preserves a little more of that voted debt that you could consider issuing in 2027. So that third option, which is I think where the staff found the most viable option, the recommendation would be to not increase the overall amount of debt you're issuing this spring, but do include the two-thirds. spring, but do include the two thirds, reduce the voted debt by a like amount and come out with the same amount. And that will allow you in 2027, as more projects have come to fruition and you're getting better sense of pricing and what has inflation done, will have a better sense of what the model will support. It'll give you an opportunity in '27 to decide, you know, do we want to issue the remaining voted debt, another two thirds or, or just what the voters approve. So the third option sort of takes advantage of the two thirds. It'll, it preserves a little bit of the voted debt for the next issuance and gives you or that council at that time, the opportunity to revisit all of this with better information. So that was the rec, that is the recommendation and just big picture. So it's a refresher for y'all. Uh, if you wanted to move forward with the two thirds, we, we would submit an application to the local government commission. Submitting the application is not binding. Um, at your February 4th meeting, um, you would introduce what's called a bond order for the two thirds bonds. That's a legal requirement and you would consider approving what's called a, um, findings resolution. It's an initial resolution that says we want to submit an application to the LGC and, um, consider moving forward. At the February 18th meeting, you would hold the public hearing on the two thirds. That public hearing would be specific to the two thirds. The public hearing, you don't need a public hearing for the voted debt because the voters approved that. Because the two thirds aren't voter approved, there's a public hearing. That would happen on February 18th. Uh, the LGC would consider your application for the two thirds on March 4th. I would be very surprised if there were any issue with that application, but you don't want to take it for granted. And finally, on March 4th, for the two thirds and the voted bonds, you would, um, do a final issuance resolution. So that, that March 4th meeting, you're going to do something. It's either going to be an issuance resolution for just the voted debt or an issuance resolution that is for both the two thirds and the voted. So there'll be an action that night anyhow. The bonds will sell on March 25th. That is a date that the local government commission gave us. That's the date where you lock in your interest rate and then you close the bonds in April and that's when you get the funds. Um, so, you know, a lot of information. Happy to try to answer questions if there are, um, between myself and David. Hopefully we can address your questions.
A excellent presentation. That was very clarifying. Uh, as staff was explaining this concept to me a little earlier today, uh, it finally kicked in. I said, so it's kind of like the home equity line that many of us have on our homes. It's an authorization to borrow some money at a future date. Uh, if we want to get in the home equity line set up, does not start the meter running and us making payments. Uh, the bond approval that had been voted in the past, we didn't start paying interest until we started selling some of those bonds, tapping that line of credit. To me, our option number three that staff has recommended here on your advice, that you two gentlemen, uh, says that we could kind of refresh our home equity line without incurring any more debt, but we have more capacity later if we need it.
If you need it.
Am I, am I oversimplifying this?
No, I don't think so. That final point I think is the most important. If you were to, to, to issue the two thirds, it would preserve that voted debt for the next issuance and it, it just, you'll have better information at that point and it might allow you to afford the project more easily than you would have otherwise. And, and with the voted debt, there's no requirement you ever issue that debt. Yes, the, you ask the voters and they approved it, but that doesn't mean you issue it. So this third option, the recommendation just takes advantage of the two thirds that is in front of you, but it preserves that amount for a future council to decide, is that the right amount to issue or do we, do we downsize because we want to issue less debt?
And the key thing I heard from you just now, it preserves the opportunity for future council decisions to, to make, uh, decisions. Even your outline says by February 4th meeting, we would have an opportunity to look at this again. February 18th is another public hearing, an opportunity to make a decision. And even after that, we'll have other op, council will have other opportunities to make decisions about actually issuing these bonds, uh, or, or getting the bond capacity and then even further down the line, that we want to actually use that credit line. So I think the question before us tonight is do we want to continue to look at this and, and keep that option open as staff has recommended, as you have recommended? Keep this option open, look at it again over the coming weeks before we incur any more debt, any more obligation, much less spend the money that we have set aside. Would you like to summarize the, the options before us?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, if I may, um, yeah, you, you're on the right track there. So, so again, we'll go back to the three options. Um, option one is, is council could decide just to let this opportunity lapse. And that's what it is. It's an opportunity. It's not anything that's required. Uh, council could say, you know, we're just not interested in doing this at this time. Um, you know, we have our debt, debt model built out on $69 million of, of geo debt and we, we just want to stick with that for now. Uh, option two is, uh, council could decide to issue additional debt at this time in addition to what has been planned as part of the, the geo bond referendum, the second installment sale of $30 million. Council could say, we'd like to tack on another $2 million to that because, uh, we need that money for, for projects. Option three, which is what staff is recommending, is to take advantage of the two thirds bonds, but supplant the geo bonds we were planning to issue by 1.9 million with the two thirds bonds. So net is still the same. We're still going to issue the same amount of debt at this time. Um, it just preserves about $2 million of additional debt capacity for the future. So again, we're authorized to issue 69 million. Council could stick to that and, and issue exactly 69 million, uh, over these next few years. Council could decide to issue less debt. Um, or council could take advantage of this two thirds opportunity and have a little additional capacity for debt in the future, which we would evaluate at a later date to decide if we want to, if council wishes to issue that additional debt. So we would, uh, as Ted referenced, we would have some, some additional data on project costs and things that we're working on. Um, the debt model will be updated. We would have a better, a better view of our financial picture at that time. Um, so basically this just sets aside some additional capacity for debt in the future that council again could choose to never take advantage of, even if they say we want to set it aside now. Like no obligation to issue any additional debt in the future. It just preserves some capacity and we have that opportunity now and, and again, we'll have that same opportunity two years from now. We could do it now at, you know, 1.9 million, do it again in two years from now, maybe at another 2 million or so and potentially have, you know, approximately $4 million of additional capacity for debt. Could choose not to do anything now, revisit it two years from now and, and, and take a look at it at that time and see if you want to do two thirds. Um, just, you know, it's really, uh, whatever council's prerogative is at this time, but it's, it's again, it's not, we're not obligating ourselves to do anything in the future. It's just leaving a door open for something if there is, uh, uh, you know, the desire of council to do that in the future.
Excellent summary. With that, I think I'll ask for feedback or questions or comments from our council. I'll start with Mayor Pro Tim Vance.
I have no questions at this time. No questions.
Ms. Behringer? Mr. Singleton?
Basically what we're considering doing or being asked to do is to create a contingency fund because of unforeseen expenses on some of our projects. That's basically what it is. I mean, you can call it what we want, but basically we're shifting funds because I talked with Mr. Miller last, last week or this week, I can't remember. We talked about cost escalation as these projects, you know, that this year and in two more years, who knows what the cost will be in two years. Basically that's what we're doing is trying to make sure that some of the projects we have planned will have additional funding opportunities. Is that contingency funding? If you look at the definition of contingency, contingency, is there a fund to cover unexpected expenses? So that's basically a layman's term of what, what we're doing, but we're allowed to do it and you're not issuing any more bonds. And then as Mr. Beck said, in two years, you may have that opportunity again and pick up an additional 1.9 or 2 million dollars because by that time, who knows what a project may cost. So that's, that's basically what we're being asked to consider at this time, based off the staff's recommendation of pushing that 1.9 into the future.
Yeah, I think that's, that's a good summary and it, it would be, if you pursued it, it would be a geo bond, which gives you your lowest interest rate and it would be a cheaper debt than you would if you wanted to go and borrow money from a bank, for example. So it is low-cost debt relative to other options if you ever needed to explore other debt options. And it does preserve that, that voted debt for a, a, a future issuance if costs have escalated and you need additional funding.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I, uh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Mr. Rethews. Go ahead.
Uh, I like the way you put it and I like the way Gray so eloquently put it, uh, we're so understandable here. And, and coming into beginning of the year, we know things are changing worldwide. Uh, being the eternal optimist, I'm hoping interest rates will come down. Uh, the cost of goods coming down, transportation costs coming down and all that affects everything across the board. So what we're, projects we're looking at today, who knows, as early as three or four months from now, all that could change to a positive for the town and what we're going to get for those dollars. And, uh, I do like the recommendation that staff has put together and, and I think we all got a good firm understanding of what we're talking about here. It's a good financial decision.
Very, very good. Excellent comments, feedback. Uh, we don't have to take an official action except to, uh, maybe kind of nod our heads that we want to support the staff recommendation to continue looking at this. We'll have several other opportunities to make more firm decisions with an actual vote. So I'm nodding my head in favor of accepting the staff recommendation. Do I see some other heads nodding up and down? Okay. Is that what you wanted?
Yes, sir.
That was just fine.
Well, well, thank you for making it simple for us. Thank you for looking after this important financial stuff. It all comes down to, to help our citizens and to save the town money in the long run. This is not about spending money, this is talking about saving money. Okay. Uh, that being said, is there any further discussion, any other comments, questions on this issue? Well, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you all very much.
Very, very, very helpful.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we get over to page two of the agenda, item number three, and I see that, uh, one of our favorite people, a former, uh, mayor is with us this evening to help us talk about legislative agenda, but I will defer first to our town manager, Ms. Jody Miller, and Assistant Town Manager John Hodges to give us a little briefing on the idea of a legislative agenda.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, and good evening again, members of council. Uh, so before you tonight for discussion and questions is proposed topics and issues to be included in the town's 2025 legislative agenda. Uh, we, we, the town used to produce a formalized, uh, council-approved agenda, uh, for many years and during the pandemic, we got a little, uh, off course with doing the official agenda for approval. So we're bringing this back, uh, as a recommendation for council to consider and take a, a formal action on this, uh, when you are satisfied with what has been included on the report. Um, but tonight is just an opportunity to propose some potential topics, uh, to identify some priority initiatives, uh, to introduce to you some of the initiatives that we're seeing coming out of the league, um, uh, and, and the, the vote that came out of their membership for some of the key goal areas and topics, and then some areas where we may oppose legislation. Uh, what you see before you this evening comes to you from recommendations put forth by, you know, your leadership staff here at the town. We asked department heads to, uh, provide information about topics and issues that they were aware of, uh, through their professional networks and associations about possible topics or issues that may come before the general assembly. Um, so what you see tonight is, um, sort of our first attempt at a list of, of, of issues and topics for your consideration. I also want to acknowledge that the town's lobbyist, Sam Bridges, is joining us this evening as well. He'll be the one that helps once we finalize the legislative agenda, help us share this information with our delegation. So that sort of sets up the, the framework for our discussion this evening. I'm going to ask Mr. Hodges to go over the agenda as drafted. So, Mr. Hodges?
Thanks, Ms. Miller. Um, mayor and council members, again, um, as we put together the, the legislative agenda, we're, we're following a format that's a little similar to things that some of you may have seen in past years, but there's a couple of differences, uh, of the way we're organizing things tonight. Uh, there, at the top of your, your legislative agenda, there are three local initiatives. We wanted to call these out, uh, at the top of the list because these type of things will require local bills, special action that council will have to work with us on. Uh, the first one of those is Town of Garner Charter Amendment to Increase the Settlement Authority for the Town Manager. This is a topic that council has discussed in the recent past. I believe at the time there was, um, a, a consensus to move forward with that, but to, because that is in our charter, it would require a local bill for us to amend our charter. So if council was continuing to want to pursue that, we need to start the work that has to be done, um, so that we can file that local bill by the deadlines that come up in a few weeks in February. The second item is one that we've talked about previously and we've introduced it as a local bill in the past, I think two sessions ago, and that is to broaden electronic notification authorizations. When we did introduce that a couple of sessions ago, um, it did not move forward. There was some, uh, resistance from members of the legislature to consider this. Um, and I believe that included some of the delegation that, that currently represents Garner. So I think if there's interest in moving that forward, um, we would need to have some discussion about whether, whether now is the best and most appropriate time to do that and whether the return on it is best for us, uh, in this upcoming session. And lastly, on the local initiatives is one that was considered last year and filed, community facility impact fees. Council probably remembers that we had discussion and worked with, with staff and, and Mr. Bridges to file, uh, a local bill to allow us to have, uh, impact fees to help fund community facilities. This also did not move forward, um, in this legislature. Uh, so again, if there's a desire to move that forward, there'd have to be some, probably some discussion with councils to whether or not this is the appropriate time to do it, given that it did not, uh, move forward last session. Um, so with both of those things, I think, uh, going into a, a new legislature with new leadership, there's discussion that should be had about the appropriateness and the timing of the second to, the second, uh, second and third of these. I think the first one is one that staff is, uh, interested in moving forward. Um, and at the end of the presentation, we can circle back and talk about those three specifically, if that's okay. The next session, section of the, uh, legislative agenda are four topics that we feel like are the priorities for our community in the, as we head into this session. I caveat that with, we never really know exactly what might get introduced in this session and so our top four may change, but going into the session, these are the topics that we think is most important for us to focus on and ones that we would like to, to ensure that our council, if you agree, and our leadership team at the staff level, all have talking points around these anytime that we have an opportunity to interface with anybody in the legislature, especially those that represent us. And those four topics include correcting the damaging implications of the downsizing provisions included in Senate Bill 382. Uh, Ms. Jones has shared information with council about this. This was, um, this was action that was taken late in the session last year. Um, and there is caused, it is causing some confusion and limits local governments from adopting zoning and development ordinances to encourage development, protect adjacent property values and make their communities more attractive for residents and businesses. Uh, we're actually planning to talk more with council about some of the implications of that bill, uh, later in the month at the work session, but until future ga, more guidance comes out from the legislature, there's potential that even some of our text amendments that were adopted recently for our UDO may have to be reconsidered or may not be, um, may not be in effect. So more to come on that. If you have specific questions about that tonight, um, we can, Ms. Jones can try to help answer those, but no matter, no matter what questions we may have, we suggest that this is a very top priority because it is, it is impacting our ability to move forward. It could impact, um, zoning discussions as well as some of the, the ETJ type things that we've been, um, that we've been having as a priority. The second one is, um, the desire to preserve extraterritorial jurisdiction to ensure that our expansion may proceed to protect economic development opportunities. Uh, we started our ETJ expansion last year. Um, we did, uh, recently move out of the land use committee at Wake County Planning Board and it is scheduled to go to the full planning board, uh, next time that they need, but there was a lot of discussion in the last several sessions about limitations on the ability for municipalities to extend ETJ and in some cases, even some attempts to take away ETJ. And I think that we've had lots of discussion at a council level and I think that everybody, um, on council has shared their enthusiasm about moving forward with that expansion. So we think that that is our number two priority is, is lobbying to make sure we retain that ability. Third is supporting economic development job. Third is supporting economic development job creation and growth through funding for critical infrastructure, including transportation, water, sewer, and stormwater. We join with other municipalities around the state and encourage in our legislature to find ways to make use of some of the funding that is sometimes doled out in different ways to make that more uniform and ways that communities like ours can access that so that we can make expansions to our systems and infrastructure that will help us grow our community in a responsible way. And lastly, we're, we've included supporting full funding for public education that will increase academic opportunities for students and support high-quality classrooms and workforce in order to promote academic achievement. And we think it's important to be supporting how funding for public education is allowing us to have as much potential for our local schools and our Wake County schools as possible. So those are the four things that we're including in our priorities that we recommend that we include as the top priorities. And be glad to pause there to discuss any of those or we can run through the rest of the agenda and then circle back for discussion on any of these sections. So I'll move ahead and walk through the agenda and then we can come back to those. The layout then, after the local initiatives and priority initiatives, we're then including a support section, and we often do this with our legislative agenda. We're starting off with a support statement, a support statement of supporting policies that enable municipalities to create a high quality of life, to provide economic opportunity, and to attract businesses, residents, and visitors. So within this support statement or under this support statement, we foresee that there'll be things that come up during the session that we'd like to add to this list. But we're starting our list with the 10 goals that were just adopted by the League of Municipalities. Those are listed there for you. I won't read them all to you, but we as staff believe that all 10 of the priority goals this year from the league are worthy of our support as they move those forward within working with the legislature. So those continue on the second page. Also, in a part of our format is opposition to any threats to municipal authority and responsiveness to local issues. And so this is an area that we foresee as bills get introduced or topics get introduced that we think would be adverse to the town's operations. We would include them in this section that we oppose. And we envision that we will update this on a periodic basis as enough things are needed to be added under either section. And we'll provide updated versions to our council, our leadership team, Mr. Bridges, and to our delegation at the legislature so they are aware. Currently, under the opposition, we are listing one topic that is, that is front of mind for our staff, which is building codes and inspections. There has been a lot of, of work by the legislature, a lot of discussion in the legislature to put off parts of building codes and other things that, at some point, we will have a tipping point, our staff believes, in being able to balance the effectiveness of our inspections work and the safety of the buildings we're building with efforts to do private inspections, with some of the other things that limits our ability to do the work that we're chartered, charged with doing to make sure that we've got infrastructure and buildings that are reliable and safe. So that is one topic that staff has already identified that we believe will come up again this session that we're proposing to include in the oppositions. And then lastly, for your benefit, the end of the report, we've prepared just a one-page handout that this will separate from our legislative agenda. This is really just something we'll provide to council and any of our leadership team that may need it, just to highlight that our current representatives that, and we've had some changes with districts and so forth, but this is our current legislative delegation that represents Garner. So we have three members of the House and two members of the Senate that represent part of the municipality. So that is the layout of our agenda, and we can go back to the beginning of it. And Ms. Miller and Ms. Jones and I will do our best to answer any questions that you have about the layout, the content, and then we can have discussion around the local initiatives and the priority initiatives as you see fit tonight.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much, very informative. I guess it's time for questions or comments from council members. We'll start with Mr. Matthews.
I just have one on the priority initiatives, the last one, support full funding for public education. Can you elaborate more on that? What are we saying here? Aren't we already doing that? We've got Sam right here. Is, what are we saying here? Somebody want to break that down for me a little bit better, I appreciate it.
I think the origin of it was taking a lead from our Wake County Public School System, who is our partner in delivering education in our community. And they, in the past session or so, have had a similar type of, of request because I think there's, there's different, different types of education systems that are vying for funding. And I think our public school systems are asking for funding, all the funding that is needed to ensure that our public school system can operate as it needs to. And so I think it's really just following along the lead of our partners with Wake County Public Schools.
Just reflect in, for example, private schools, charter schools, or parents are, and I know a lot of people deal with this, taking them out of the public schools and putting them in a private school or charter school. For whatever reason, they think they're going to get a better education, I'll use that term. And, and so that money follows that child. Is, is this what we're talking about here?
So specifically, if I can add into John's comments, it really focuses on more on the public education funding. So those for public schools within the Wake County Public School System. As far as private schools, it's, that's really a separate issue with the voucher system that's funded through a different way through the state. But we also know through the public funding for public schools, there's also the question of how much of those dollars go towards the charter programs and charter schools as well. So this, this priority issue really echoes and supports what the Wake County Public Schools have said in, in terms of providing the high-quality education that we want and expect from our school system and that we want in town, that we make sure we fully fund the school system in order to make sure we've got high-quality classrooms and facilities. We have top-notch teachers, we're able to attract and retain staff, all those things that really continue to support and build our public education system here in Wake County.
We haven't had a specific discussion.
Use the mic, if you will, please.
We haven't had a specific discussion about what, what that might mean in regard to a potential position on vouchers.
Right.
That's just, that's a general statement. So we can talk about the voucher issue more later, or I don't know that we want to even talk about. But I, I get where you're coming from.
And the reason I bring that up, because that's up to the parents and I'm not going, I'm not a school board member or anything, I'm just a city councilman. But I do represent close to 47,000 people in this community and parents and families moving in. And education is very important to them, as to all of us. Let me preface that right up front. How they mean to do that if they feel more comfortable that their child is going to school X out here versus the school they're assigned to, they'll get a better education there. And, and that money would follow that student wherever that student went. And that's their decision. I guess I'm just getting a clarification here. We're saying, we're only going to support this one, we're not going to support that one. Do you follow where I'm going with all this?
Certainly.
I don't want to get involved with the politics, but people ask us these questions and I would like to be able to answer them, how much is the town getting involved on this?
I, if I, down to the legislature, as it's written, I would not necessarily launch into a discussion about, we don't, we oppose vouchers.
Right.
We would, right?
Yes, that is correct, that is correct.
Generally.
More generally about supporting public education and the importance of it here in the town of Garner, supporting our schools.
I think everybody would be agreeing with that, but if somebody asks you about that down there, your guy's got to answer it.
But you may or may not want to clarify what you want that to mean as counsel.
Say that again, now.
Use the mic, please.
I'm sorry. You may or may not want to clarify for that last statement about public education, whether you want that to, uh, clarify your position on vouchers or, or whether you just want to leave it like it is. So, but we haven't had that discussion. Again, I'm just responding to what you're thinking, I know where you're coming from.
So I may not want to clarify that through another ring. You know, because I think we all support public education up here, that's not even the issue. How does that impact on that? Because a lot, that's a big deal going on right now, and I know it firsthand. And so, you know, as we represent our constituents, you know, well, one guy says, you know, part of my people think this and other people think that, and I support my constituents, you know. But if, if we're just saying generically, we're supporting public education and not bringing that into the mix, that, that's fine, that's something the legislature will have to make that decision if there is any changes on that. So I just wanted, this is a point of clarification for me. I'm not siding one way or the other, but if I'm asked, I'd like to be able to answer that question. If that makes sense, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, thank you very much. Mr. Singleton, questions, comments?
I think what Mr. Bridges was implicating was you may not want to clarify any further because you don't say, well, we want to specifically talk about this or we don't want to specifically talk about this. It's very broad and general because it's talking about education. We're not saying, oh, we specifically do want to focus on vouchers or we don't want to focus on that, or private schools or charter schools or whatever. I think it's a broad spectrum of public education because charter schools now get public funds, so that's considered public education. I mean, in a way, if you take that broad spectrum. So I think that's what is somewhat being implied by not being so specific, so.
I can live with that, I'm just, I'm just trying to get a clarification. We're supporting this, but not this. All of a sudden, we waded into something, we don't, down that rabbit hole, we don't want to go down, so.
I understand staff recommendations and can move forward with what we, what we have talked about.
Thank you, Ms. Behringer, comments? Mr. Vance?
Yes, under the local initiatives, can you explain the second bullet, broaden electronic notice authorization? Can you clarify that a little deeper, please?
I'm going to ask Ms. Jones to do that since she authored that for us previously.
Yes, so a few years ago, David Banford, when he was an employee here, had requested this because while we have the ability to post our public hearing notices electronically on our website and we don't have to publish those in the paper, there are a number of other notices that are required to be published in the paper, including things like a half-page ad for the townwide rezoning. So he had brought that, that up and, and we had introduced it twice, I think. We had a little more support from some of the other communities in Wake County that have the existing authority that we have about public hearing notices. So one of it, and it wasn't just, there's an expense associated with the newspapers, but we also experienced some issues where they didn't publish the day we needed them to publish, which caused delay in, in certain things. And so by having that authority to do it on the website, that gives us a little more control over making sure that, that we comply with things. It also, I think we found that as newspaper subscriptions go down, more people are relying on things like the webpage and email blasts that they get to get this kind of information, that not everyone's looking in the newspaper for legal notices from the town. So, so that was the, what we've done. We did not introduce it last year, but we had it, I guess, two years ago and three years ago. And we had a support from, not only the communities that are currently have that authority for the public hearing notices, but several other towns in Wake County who wanted to get this authority. So we were hoping that we had a critical mass of interest in this. We don't spend a huge amount of, of money on this. Now, Cary and I believe Raleigh are fine with spending the money or passing some of those costs on to developers. But not all of the costs can be passed on to a specific developer because it's just a wide range. And I can send you, again, the list of all of the things that were required to do in a newspaper that we don't have authority to do on our webpage right now.
Okay, thank you.
What's interesting with that is, I mean, the papers don't print every day like they used to. But also, they're all, they would encourage you for electronic subscriptions. They are not encouraging you to buy a paper anymore. You know, there are very few papers delivered anywhere. I mean, most of your delivery personnel quit because they, you wouldn't make, can't make any money doing this. So I find it interesting for somebody else to put one in a hard paper that's, I see Mr. Bridges, he's got a paper with him, I don't know if it's the Raleigh News-Observer or some other newspaper with him. Isn't that a newspaper in your hand?
It's probably the only one in Wake County.
All right, the New York Times. All right, so. But I just find it interesting why they would oppose this. I mean, it sounds almost too simple to do, but you could work through the county and you could put all legal notices for all the towns in the county on a, on a website and just go through them in an alphabetical order. That just sounds too easy to do, but anyway. And have them on your own website, you submit them in and, you know, per county and just zip through. If you're looking for a legal notice, you go to the county and you go to the town, in alphabetical order, there's legal notices, but that sounds too simple. Anyway, have it on your website. But again, if there's, if you want them centralized so everybody can find it easily. Anyway, that makes too much sense.
Yeah, well, for a 20th century man, you're getting a hold of this 21st century stuff pretty well, Gray. I thank you, but this is a new world.
I mean, I mean, I'm going to go, when I worked in Margaret Ann Eastlake, I'd buy a hard copy of the Washington Daily News. It's only printed twice a week now, it used to be printed seven days a week. And I bring it home, my daddy likes to look at it, so, you know, that's just a fact, but I mean.
Right.
You're trying to find a hard copy of the News-Observer now. You're trying to find a hard copy of the News-Observer, that's the challenge.
Their Sunday paper is about the size of Garner Times used to be.
Anyway, it's just, what Ms. Jones just stated is, I mean, this is common sense. Why would you go to something that is deemed by many people to be an out-of-date mode of communication?
Like you say, yeah, we could probably do a symposium on how, how the laws keep up with the real world, particularly related to technology. So that's great information. I don't think we're being asked to take any particular stance or vote or approval on anything.
I think, Mayor, what we just wanted to make sure is that, that council is comfortable with the general format of what we're following for this. If there are any specific items that are included here that you want to provide feedback, you can send that to Ms. Miller and myself and Ms. Jones, or however you'd like to transmit it, and we can take that into consideration. I do think for tonight, though, we do need potentially to have some discussion about if there are any of the local initiatives that do need to move forward because there are some deadlines for filing. So I'll turn that back over to Ms. Miller if she wants to lead that discussion about next steps that may be needed to meet the filing deadlines.
Thank you, Mr. Hodges. So based on the conversation I'm hearing from the council this evening, it sounds like bullet number one and bullet number two are something that the council would support. And we can work with Mr. Bridges on continuing to pursue those and going ahead and filing, and looking for sponsors for filing those local, local initiatives, those local bills. The, the, item number three, the community facility impact fees. If you recall, this is something that the council requested be submitted last year. This was really an opportunity to model, like some other communities, that had an opportunity to impose impact fees for community facilities. Some communities had done it for public safety communities. And the discussion from council was with a lot of the growth that's happening in the community and the need to expand our public safety services. There should be an opportunity to have some of those in the development community help provide some funding to, to support those, specifically the facility piece of it, any new capital projects that we would have to. So we did work with Mr. Bridges last year to submit that local bill. It went to committee and it pretty much stayed in committee, is my understanding. So, so I wanted to bring this to your attention, get a sense from the council, is this something you, we want to consider again, potentially having a bill introduced? I will share with you, we did get a lot of questions from the Home Builders Association when we filed this last year, wanting to better understand it. My sense is that we probably will get similar questions and feedback from them. And so as Mr. Hodges mentioned, wanting to make sure that if council moves forward on this particular item, that we agree that the timing is appropriate or would we wait till some other potential time to introduce this bill again? So wanted to touch base with council as far as how you're feeling about this particular bill and whether it's something you want us to try to reintroduce in the current session.
So is that a question to the council?
Yes. So the question before the council is, would you like us to try to reintroduce this and work with Mr. Bridges to do that? Or would you rather us wait to maybe learn a little bit more about what's going to happen in the session before we make that decision?
Comments or questions on that, Mr. Vance?
I would defer to Mr. Matthews, like anybody else.
I would support, let's just wait on that one.
You read, Mr. Singleton?
I mean, if we can make it specifically to public. I mean, if we can make it specifically to public safety, I would move forward with it, because I think that's what we talked about earlier. It's just community facility impact fees. I think if you made it more specific, people might understand it more because with the incredible residential growth, you're having to establish particularly whether it's a combination fire, police, EMS station like Station Five is. I did get it right, Station Five, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so I got the right number. And, and how is, is you reach out further and further away, that other, not only Garner, other communities will need those also, particularly in more metropolitan areas, but anyway. I think if it was more, if it stated more specifically, that's what it was for, instead of community facility, and community facility, it's not like it could be a community center. I mean, to me, it should, if you're going to have, if you're going to consider it, it should be specific to, if it's going to be for public safety, then say so. If it's not going to be for public, if it's more broad than that, fine, but if that's what we're focusing on, then I think that should be listed as, I think that should be considered in, in listing what the facility impact fees are.
And to provide a little bit more information, the, the terminology of community facility impact fees was used last year because we were trying to use similar language and look for similar authority that other communities in, in North Carolina and Wake have in order to impose these impact fees, and that authority is bigger than just public safety facilities. It did include some other community facilities, so that's, when we modeled our bill and request, it was modeled after what other communities had, had already been approved. Attorney Jones, would you add anything to that?
Well, I'd have to defer to Ms. Gibbs. She, she actually did a yeoman's effort to draft this while I was on a one-day vacation last year.
Yeah, I can answer that. The way I think we had defined community service facilities in the draft was sidewalks, thoroughfare, right of rights of way, fire stations, police stations, cultural facilities other than libraries, solid waste collection, and solid waste handling disposal and recycling.
And I believe that was modeled on, was it Knightdale or Wake Forest?
I think it was Knightdale. I'll have to double check, but.
And how recently did that get approved?
I believe more than a decade ago.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, other feedback, comments, Ms. Behringer? Mr. Vance?
I'm, I'm thinking of deferring until a more favorable opportunity to present this to the legislators. I think just wait for the right timing.
Okay, is that the feedback you need?
Yes, that's very helpful. So we'll work with Mr. Bridges on the two local bills regarding the charter amendment for the settlement authority, as well as the electronic notification authorization. And we'll continue to monitor things in terms of the community facility impact fees, and if there's an opportunity to review this, review this, again, this issue, we'll certainly bring it back to council for further discussion and consideration. So thank you for the, for the feedback this evening.
Excellent, thank, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Hodges.
I say one thing?
Sure.
Thank you all for doing this, this is very helpful. I would encourage you also, I'm sure we will talk about some funding packages. Hopefully, the legislature may again have some discretionary money that we might be able to tap into, and, and again, thank you all for doing this. You, you will probably recognize Monika, who was our school board member, is now in Rosa Gilsey in the House, and will be our go-to person for us as the others, and, and we have a new school board member that is replacing a Monika named Christina Gordon. I don't know her, but she's just recently been chosen by the school board to fill that seat. She, I believe she is a former teacher and a member and works for the NCAE, and, and I look forward to getting to know her, and look forward to introducing you all to her too. So, that's it.
Yeah, thank you for coming back to see us. Okay, well, if there's no other business related to that particular item.
Well, take all the money you can get for us, Sam, we appreciate it.
Yeah, keep working it, man, keep working it.
I want you to leave that out.
Okay, well, well, thank you very much. With that, I think we'll move ahead to item number four on the agenda tonight, which is the Aversboro-Garner acquisition. Our presenter is our very own town attorney, presenter Terry Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is a report I do from time to time when the acquisition of Right of Way and Easements is complete. So the Aversboro Road and Garner Road sidewalks, they're short connector segments, and they're actually, we went through the acquisition process together, they will be put out to bid and constructed, you know, as one project even though they're in different parts of town. So as you can see from the memo that's in your packet, you originally authorized the acquisition in July of 2024, one for Garner Road and one for Aversboro, since they are technically two different projects. I'm happy to report that we completed all of the acquisitions by December of 2024. I had, had started contacting some property owners before July, but we were able to get through all of the closings this fall, and you will see in the report, there's a list of the parcels, which are the parcel zero, one, two, that's how the designer, engineer actually like defined them, you'll see the address, the property owner, and then the compensation that was paid for both of them. I'm happy, and if you see in the, each of the authorizing resolutions had a not-to-exceed amount, we were able to complete all of these acquisitions in-house and within the budgets allotted, so there'll be a little bit left in that, those construction budgets in case there's any unforeseen impacts, but basically, everything was done in-house except for title searches, which I contracted out to a local attorney to do those. So I'm here to ask, answer any questions you might have about this, but this is part of the process of just reporting out that we've completed the acquisition phase.
Well, I think earlier you summarized all this as within the budget and no litigation. So what else you want to know?
Yes, even though you authorized the filing of, of eminent domain lawsuits if necessary, all of these property owners were cooperative with the process, and we didn't need to resort to any litigation.
Well, that is certainly refreshing, isn't it?
Yes.
Indeed. Any other comments or questions from council members on this particular item?
No questions.
Good job.
Good job, and thank you for a very positive report. Everybody loves sidewalks, and here's another important step, and you just saved some money we, we can spend on the actual construction instead of the litigation. Thank, thank you very much. That being said, we can move right along to manager reports, Ms. Miller?
Yes, before you this evening, council, is your pending agenda for February. Just want to quickly review this with you, looking at your February 4th meeting. Remember, we had to cancel our January 21st meeting due to wintry weather, so the, the agenda has a lot of items on there, but I promise that there, we'll be able to get through it rather quickly. We've got a few presentations, including recognizing our Dream and Action Award winners, which were recognized at the MLK event earlier this month, and then recognizing American Legion baseball coach Chris Cook as well, a proclamation. We've got several consent items that'll be before you, pretty much standard items for consideration. We've got two public hearings, these public hearings would have been on your January 21st meeting, but was moved to the 4th. The first one is 5828 Fayetteville Road, and the second is, and that's a rezoning. The second is a zoning text amendment for stormwater requirements for nitrogen control. We've got a few items under old new business that'll be coming back to council. First is a rezoning for the Pool Drive Commercial and Fuel Sales Project, also rezoning requests for the Thompson Business Part Two, and rezoning for the Garner Industrial Park as well. And then we have a few of our just quarterly reports to share with council, your Talk of the Town reports, our quarterly financial report, we'll give an update on our Development Services team, as well as our capital report for our projects. So we'll have a lot of good information provided from each of those reports. Looking ahead to your second meeting in February, which is the 18th, we've got two public hearings scheduled, the first is a Circle K on Highway 70, and then Burnett Crossing as well, and then under old new business coming back to council is Exchange at 401 Commercial in Yerken Park. And then remember, this February, council has its two-day retreat, there'll be all-day retreats, February 20th and 21st. We will be holding our retreat, retreat over in the Fire Department Training Room, which is behind Fire Station One. Our department has been gracious enough to let us use that room and facility. We thought going to a new, new facility with a different perspective would be good for us, so we're going to be able to use their training facility, and very appreciative that they're allowing us to do that. And then looking ahead to the regular work session in February, February 25th, we've got several discussions that are coming back to council, follow-up to residential UDO discussion and possible amendments there, the impacts of the downzoning bill, the nonconformities, which we talked a little bit about in terms of the legislative agenda this evening, potentially further discussion on the special use permit process as well, and then nuisance ordinance amendments. So those are all items we would anticipate coming back to you at your February work session, and then we'll have our pending agenda reports as well. So that gives you just a brief overview of all the items that we're aware of coming forward during your February meetings. Happy to answer any questions the council may have.
So we took a snow day last week, and we're paying for it next week.
We are, we are, but, but I think some of the items, especially consent items and some of the reports, I think we'll be able to get through, through those fairly quickly. So I think that the agenda is manageable for the evening.
Doesn't look too bad. Thank you very much for pulling that together. Other question, comments from council members?
A question in reference to the, the work session and the tentative for, for the SUP discussion, but why is that tentative?
Well, right now, we just put it on there as a placeholder for that particular topic. We do each, a meeting try to look at balancing as far as the topics and the, and the agenda items, so we placed that there because there was an interest by council members that wanting to have that discussion. It does somewhat relate to the continued discussion regarding the residential possible amendments to the UDO, but wanted to make sure from a perspective of just how we manage the meeting and just the length of the meeting, that we, we do a good job trying to balance the agenda, so that's why it says tentative at this point.
Good.
Okay, excellent, thank you very much, and that takes us right along now to attorney reports.
I have no report, I have several items to discuss with you in closed session this evening.
Thank you very much, and there's always room for council reports.
I would say that to the, to all those engaged with the MLK celebration on this past weekend, great job on that for the day of service, and again, I'd like to thank the task force and the, and the staff and, and the council for the great support for the affordable housing endeavor, and we know that we will continue on with it. Just want to say thank you to y'all for your, for your support.
And thank you, thank you. Ms. Behringer?
Yes, I want to thank Mr. Vance for his patience in explaining so many things to us on an individual level about the report, it made everything clear and easy to work with. Okay, the Art Committee is, we today got word that a shroud had been placed on the utility cabinet going into Garner Rec Park, so go by and check it out. You'll have to look around some of the, the foliage, but you'll see a, a larger-than-life creature on that rep. We're in the process of getting another one done, our sculpture is being created right now, and we're going to start having conversations about a mural on a building on Main Street. So it's exciting, okay? I have a question for the manager, I had sent you a picture of the broken utility pole on Garner Road, did we know anything about that?
I don't have any updates, but our Public Works Director, Mr. Jones, was going to follow up to see had, had it been reported, and if not, make sure that it has been, so.
It's been like 12 days now.
Yeah, so I will follow up with him to see if he got any updates on that, but we did make sure we, we followed up and reported directly to them.
A little scary looking, that's all.
Okay, thank you, excellent. Mr. Singleton?
Yes, want to thank Public Works for the work they did last week with the snow and the ice. Saw our folks out there every day, and appreciate their work, DOT and work they did also, but I saw, specifically saw town trucks out there doing their job, and appreciate them doing that, so putting the brine down helps, but sometimes it doesn't help. I'm worried about where I'm going tomorrow, with the roads in the shade down east, and where it was a sheet of ice last week, I drove across for about two miles. I was sitting there thinking, all right, am I going to make this or not? Because, I mean, it's basically what it was, a little, no shade, they got more snow down, they got four and five plus, someplace six, six inches, and it dried, it just got packed onto it, it was just ice. And so I should have warmed up, I sure hope it's gone, but anyway, but anyway, thanks to Public Works for what they did, and always do. And also, we talked about the two-thirds bonds, heck, we might have to use those if we have the Easter egg hunt this year and use real eggs. I do know that, what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
Place of Eggs, there's a big article about it today, and how much they've gone up since, because of Hercules, I'll tell you something else about that in a minute. That's all for now.
Just ditto's on Public Works, getting out, brining things, you know, especially all the shade in those hills and areas, and it, it, it does make a difference, but sometimes it's a few days, and, and all the alerts and being informative, Public Affairs did a great job in notifying everybody about town hall, and plus, we took care of our employees' safety, which was paramount, and good job.
Okay, well, thank you, and I think that concludes the open session agenda. I believe that we do need to move to a closed session. Ms. Jones, if you would give us the correct citation or the rationale for a closed session, we would consider moving in that direction.
Yes, it would be pursuant to North Carolina General Statute Section 143-318.1185, to discuss possible real estate acquisition and the town's negotiating position regarding such real estate interests.
Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved?
Seconded.
Okay, a move by Mr. Matthews, seconded by Mr. Singleton. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed by nay. That being said, we will move to a closed session. Thank you all who attended in person and virtually, I know there's many of you out there, thank you too for tuning in, even if it's tomorrow or the next day, but we'll move to our closed session, stick around, we'll be back in an hour or two.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. And we return to the open session. I will call on our town attorney to give us a summary of what was covered in the closed session, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. During the closed session, council gave direction to the town attorney regarding real estate acquisition and took the following action. Council voted unanimously to approve Resolution Number 2025-2625, a resolution of intent to acquire easements needed for Rand Mill Road and Main Street improvements by negotiated purchase if possible or by eminent domain where required. Council also voted to adopt Resolution Number 2025-2626, a resolution of intent to acquire easements needed for Jürgen Park improvements by negotiated purchase if possible or by eminent domain where required. Council also voted to adopt Resolution Number 2025-2627, a resolution of intent to acquire easements needed for street and sidewalk improvements along Bryan Road by negotiated purchase if possible or by eminent domain where required. And finally, council also voted to approve and adopt Resolution Number 2025-2628, a resolution ratifying the acquisition of right-of-way and easements needed for street and sidewalk improvements along Pearl Street and Parker Street.
Excellent. Very productive session. Any other action needed here tonight or any other questions or comments before we accept a motion to adjourn? Okay, well, in that case then, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded. Moved by Ms. Behringer and seconded by Mr. Vance.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all in favor of adjournment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.